All right. Good evening. This is Tuesday, August 13th, 2019, Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in closed session since 6 o'clock for items listed on the agenda. We have all seven Board members present, and at this time we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the Board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens or representatives of other public agencies. I do not have anyone on the list. Is there anyone else for public comment? All right. Then we will move on to reports and presentations. We have summer professional learning recap and 2019-2020 professional learning plan with Nikki Tirmor.
So you just approved the operational plan, and Nikki is going to present to you some of the different things that we're doing to support our teachers, to implement our learning and teaching priorities. And a lot of that work goes on over the summer. So you've got a recap of some of the stuff that's gone on over the summer, as well as the plan for the year for teachers and administrators.
Thanks, Dave. All right. So in Elmhurst, our vision is that all students will be college, career, and life ready, and we say that we will get there by using rigor and relevant instruction utilizing the six Cs. Tonight, I am going to be talking to you about three different things, and all three do happen to align to all three of our district priorities, which are creating a shared understanding of our district vision, aligning our curriculum resources, as well as supporting our instructional strategies regarding the implementation of six Cs and rigor and relevance. So I have the pleasure of talking about all the great things that happened over the summer with curriculum development, and some great workshops that a few of us got to attend. We did have a large group that went to model schools this year, and part of the reason that the group was so large was for two reasons. The first reason is because we actually presented. It was a wonderful opportunity for a pretty large group of us to present. Dr. Moyer did, you know, the larger presentation, but then we broke it up into a workshop model type activity where we had, let's see, we had, for innovation, we had Frank Dahlman and Lyndon Farrenbacher in that rotation for instructional rounds. It was myself and Leslie Weber. For interdisciplinary units, it was Arianna and Heidi Thomas, I believe. And then innovation from the district perspective was Dr. Moyer. And we received, I'll talk about the feedback that we received at the next slide, but due to having all those different breakouts, it did require a larger group of us to be there, and it was a really great experience for all of us. I have my tag downstairs. I actually meant to wear it, but I forgot to bring it up. So I hadn't presented in a long time, and it was a really great opportunity, so I did appreciate that. And then another reason that we had such a large attendance group, and Mr. Collins was there as well to receive some of the learning alongside us, which was great. But we had a large group from Sandberg, because as you know, Lynda Farrenbacher is really trying to do some innovative work over there, and so she took a very large group, almost her entire school improvement team, in order to be able to further implement the innovative strategies and instructional practices that they've been working on at Sandberg. So as I said, our session feedback was overwhelmingly positive, which was really great to see. People said that the presentation was, sorry, 57% of our participants strongly agreed that the presentation was beneficial to them, and 43% agreed, which gave us our 100% there. 71% of the participants said that the content was relevant and helpful to them, and 29% said that the content was relevant and helpful. And 71% said that they would be able to take what they learned and put it into practice in their building, which I thought was really great. Jen Lieben, who is a creative technology teacher at Sandberg, had some great opportunities this summer. She was a presenter for visual literacy at the ISTI conference, and actually, her way there was paid for because she was a web, a WeVideo teacher ambassador. And so we're really proud of the work that she did. And then she's actually going to be presenting at the IETC conference in Springfield as a featured speaker this fall. So that was a great opportunity for her and to represent District 205 in such a positive way. We had six teachers go to Project Lead the Way Core Training, so that we could implement two new courses this year. One will be an app creator, and the other will be for flight and space. And then I couldn't resist putting my picture up there with Kate Roberts. Kate Roberts is a famous author for those of us in the literacy world. We had the opportunity to have her come to the district. It took over a year for us to get her here because she's so busy. But all of last year, we spent our year of learning with sixth through eighth grade with the implementation of the workshop model. We did a book study using her book. And then to have her come in early June and learn alongside of us for an entire day was incredibly powerful. I literally had a teacher, you know, solicited by me, say that it was the best professional learning opportunity that she's ever had in the district, and she's been here for 16 years. So that was a really great win for us. And then we spent the next week working with sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade separately, along with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade REACH teachers separately in CDT curriculum development teams to work on ways to implement Kate Roberts' strategies into their current CDT work. We are conducting a gradebook pilot this year. As you know, standards-based reporting is pushing up to sixth grade, and due to that, we're finding some glitches with Power School where it's not as friendly with the idea of standards-based reporting. So we are piloting two additional gradebook programs, and we did get teachers from kindergarten, or sorry, from elementary all the way through high school to pilot those other two programs. So the quick version of what they're going to do is they're going to fully implement the use of Power School, and then we're going to continue to work with Power School to do just those few other things that we're still struggling with. And then the two pilot school, or the two pilot programs, they'll have like a sandbox account, and they'll be entering some assignments and assessments in there, so that we can play with that and make a determination by March as to which gradebook system we want to implement for the 2020-2021 year. Dave Beatty did a lot of great work this summer with, primarily with K-5 science teachers. He pulled them in for an entire week to learn about two different programs, and then this year, they're going to pilot those two programs again to make a determination about what we want to recommend to the Board of Education next year for that program. And then he worked with K all the way through algebra, doing some math revision work. He also had the opportunity to go to the CAO Summit. I believe that was in Atlanta. And the Opportunity Myth learning was really interesting to me. When he came back, we had a nice, long conversation, and we all want our students to be career, college, and life-ready when they graduate, but too many students are graduating, not in Elmhurst, just across the nation. Too many students are graduating not ready for college or not ready for a career. And the four main reasons why are because there's a lack of exposure to grade-level material. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. A lack of exposure to strong instruction, deep engagement, and high expectations for students. And so Dave and I talked a lot about how, as we're implementing Eureka Math, and as we're implementing Workshop Model in Math, we want to make sure that our students are being exposed to grade-level standards and grade-level work, because sometimes I think what happens unintentionally is that we overscaffold for students, and then we take out some of the rigor, and then they're not being exposed to those grade-level standards, so therefore, they're never closing that gap. So that was a really great conversation that we had based off of his learning from this summer. Arianna Leonard, our World Language Dual Language and ELL Director, did a lot of great work as well for the biliteracy. They had a five-day biliteracy institute day, or institute, where Karen Beeman, our outside presenter, worked with our dual teachers to talk about best practices in dual instruction. For her curriculum development work, they finished and revised kindergarten, as you know, that implemented last year. They finished first grade's dual curriculum development work, and then they started second grade work. And then for World Language, we aligned, or she aligned, with a group of teachers the middle school and high school assessments to ensure that if they're taking, let's say, Spanish 1 in middle school, it's the same assessment that they would take if they were taking Spanish 1 in high school, to ensure that they truly are getting the instruction that they need and that they are ready for that next experience in high school when they go there. Clearly, I was all over the place this summer, so this was before I started in this new position. So I had the opportunity to attend Carol Salva's two-day workshop with our EL teachers and our teachers who teach our SLIF students, and those are our students with limited or interrupted formal education. So they come to us not having education in their dominant language or in English. And so she did a really great two-day workshop where she showed the teachers how to keep the rigor and expose students to the grade-level standards, but allow them to access it. So we're actually going to bring her back this year to work with our instructional coaches, because we believe those strategies are good for all students, not just our SLIF students. And then she worked on her SLIF curriculum development for math and began for her EL courses at York High School. Mary Ann, to my right over here, worked on, we are getting a new data management system. It's called EDS. We are keeping Mastery Manager for this year, and we're slowly pulling in EDS all of this year and will fully implement next year. So she had 85 people register to come in and talk with her and learn more about the program. And as you can see, 98% of the participants said that they can better understand how to use the various functions of the system. So that was great work on Mary Ann's part. And then we had Working the Workshop D205 course this year. I actually co-created this course with two of our instructional coaches. It ran for the first time in the fall, and it was primarily attended by K-5 teachers. And so a huge celebration was that it was primarily attended by middle school and high school teachers this summer, which shows that they are embracing the workshop model and excited to start that work this year. So that was summer learning. So for professional learning for our first team this year, it really aligns mostly to Priority One, which is creating that shared understanding, and that's actually a mistake. It should be Priority Three, which is supporting instructional strategies aligned to the six Cs. And there's really four main things that we're going to do every time we come together. We're going to talk about culture, because we all know that culture trumps strategy. If we don't have a strong culture, we've got nothing. So we're going to build culture into all of our meetings. We're going to talk about Deep Learning, which is the book that we've been talking about in learning alongside with the six Cs last year, and we'll continue that work this year. The implementation and modeling of PLCs, and supervision of instruction. So for culture, Dr. Moyer found a book called The Four Stages of a Team, and in June, we brought in the writer Steve Ritter to work with us to do a half-day culture-building activity with our administrators. And it really was a truly honest activity, where we sort of ripped off some old tape, exposed some wounds, and had some really honest conversations to allow us to be able to move forward together as a first team. And that's where First Team came from. We said in that meeting, if we don't have our stuff together here, we can't have it together across the district. So we're really going to focus very hard this year on building a strong culture with our first team, building trust with each other, accountability, and we're excited about that work. Then on August 5th, last Monday, I can't believe it's only been a week, but last Monday, we continued the work with the Four Stages of a Team, and Scott did a really nice activity with our first team, where we looked at all of our working agreements, but we have a lot of them. And so we said, what do these really mean to us? And then we're working on creating a shared motto. And what will that motto be? I can report on that later, because we did not get to that. We had a few great ideas, but we said, we think we still need to be thinking about that, and we'll come back to that at our next meeting. And then Dr. Moyer also introduced us to the book, The Five Dysfunctions of a Team. I purchased it for our learning and teaching team, and I plan to do a book study with them. I personally haven't read it myself yet, but I've implemented a few of the strategies from that book that Dr. Moyer has been modeling for us in our cabinet meetings. A quick example is an icebreaker activity. Sometimes we start our meetings with celebrations, but then we get a little off-track, and they turn into, you know, less celebrating and more like, oh, this is a problem. And so I've been doing in learning and teaching icebreakers each week. It could be, what is your most embarrassing moment? How did you meet your spouse? How many children do you have? Right? So that we can build those personal connections and know each other as people, because we all have a life outside of what we do in District 205 every day. And if we can build those connections, it'll just make us stronger professionals while we're here. So the next thing, so that was culture. Then we're focusing on the supervision of instruction. We know how easy it is. I know how easy it is as a principal to walk in and be distracted by a management issue, a flood, a parent issue, or concern. You know, the list goes on and on of all the things that principals can be distracted by, and it's sometimes easy to allow yourself to forget to get into those classrooms. So we're really focusing on how can we help our principals get into classrooms and provide them with look fours. So each month at our EC5 and 612 meetings, we're going to be analyzing data that they will have collected the whole last month, and everybody will have the same look fours. So for example, at K-5, the look fours might be literacy walkthroughs. You're in the workshop model. These are the five things that you should be looking for. I want you to go into 15 classrooms in the next 30 days, come back, bring your data, and we'll have a conversation. And then the next month, it would be on something else, so that we're modeling that PLC, bringing data, talking about data, making instructional decisions based off of that data. We'll also be continuing with our instructional walkthroughs, so we'll be looking at that data at least two times this year. And then while we know that the effect size research says that teacher evaluation does not necessarily positively impact teacher, making teachers better teachers, we also know it's a big part of what our principals have to do every day. It's time-consuming, it's the law. So how can we build in supervision of instruction through the Danielson model? Are the thoughts that we're having. And Mark Cohen and Tim Riordan are working with our principals with that. Regarding our PLCs for district leaders, we feel like it starts at the district office. So in my learning and teaching meeting, in our learning and teaching meeting last week, it was the first time I'd had my full team together all summer, because Michelle Thompson and Leslie Weber were K-5 principals, and so they had planned on taking a lot of July off. So last week, having it, or maybe it was the week before, we did a norming activity. We talked about what are some of the behaviors or ways in which we're working, how may that be holding us back from being able to be supportive to our principals, so that they can be supportive to teachers, so that students can learn. So we, again, sort of ripped some of that old tape off, created some working agreements and some norms that we're going to hold each other accountable to. And in our agenda every week, we start with an icebreaker. For culture, we start with, or then we talk about, we have a review of the norms, and we have something that we're going to look at for data. So last week, the data that we looked at was, oh, I'm blanking, Scott. Do you remember what we looked at?
Looked at survey feedback?
Correct. Yeah, so we looked at the survey feedback from, from what? I'm blanking completely. Getting old. From the what?
From the E. From the actual first team.
Oh, right, right, right. So then we made a decision. All right, so based off of what we've learned, what are we going to do different to be better for our principals? And so tomorrow, we'll be looking at more data. It'll be, I think, I want to look at the staff survey data, because the staff took a survey that we haven't had a chance to take a look at yet. Again, because I haven't had my full team together, we'll take a look at the staff feedback, and then we'll make decisions based off of that. So by modeling it in learning and teaching, we'll also be doing that in our EC5 meetings, which I'll be running. Scott will be running the 612 meetings, and then I'm responsible for our first team meetings. So for constantly looking at our culture and doing activities around culture, and if we're looking at and talking about instruction in the classroom and supervision of instruction, and if we're modeling PLCs for our district leaders, we believe that our end result will be, that it will be observable functioning at a high level in all of our buildings. That is our goal for this year. So an example, could you click on that link for me? An example? Well, this isn't an example. This is our deep learning plan. This is what I gave to principals for this year. Hopefully, you can see it. So we tell our principals and our teachers that we want learning targets for our students, so that they know where they're going and where they need to be. So for our learning targets this year for our leaders, it's that we want to build an understanding of the six Cs through self-directed learning. What that means is, based off of their feedback, they told us that just reading the Deep Learning book wasn't necessarily working for them. So what we do each month is we find podcasts, we find articles, we find a variety of different things that they can read on the C that we're learning about that month, so they can choose their learning, so that it's applicable to them. For example, Jackie DiCipio has a baby, so she listens to podcasts, because she can do that while she's taking her daughter for a walk. Whereas I have a daughter in high school and a daughter in college, I have the time to sit and read an article, because as those of you who have kids, I think my kids age, they want nothing to do with us anymore. Right? So, but we tried, that was again, based off of their feedback. That's why we're doing it that way. Collaborate to continuously adapt and apply the learning to the school improvement process, so how are we building that into the school improvement process? Highlighting the bright spots that currently exist in classrooms, meaning that, let's say that this month, we're learning about collaboration. They go in and they find collaboration in the classrooms, and they either video it, take a picture of it, tweet it out, what have you. They bring it back to the next meeting, and they collaborate and show their peers, and then we have a protocol that really challenges their thinking. Is that truly collaboration as we've defined it in District 205? And then the implementation, staff, professional learning on collaboration, communication, and critical thinking. So last year, we learned about those three. Now we're giving them tools and resources to go back and teach those to their teachers in a systematic way, which I'll show you if, Dave, you can go down a little bit. So for example, on September 5th, I can't see that from across the room, once again, getting old. So we created learning targets. Last year, for collaboration, critical thinking, and communication, we created learning targets. And what we're going to do is we're going to review those learning targets. Thank you. Very helpful. We're going to review those learning targets with the principals, and then we're going to allow them, again, based off their feedback. They said, why are we all going back to our buildings and creating our own slideshow presentation for our teachers? All 13 of us are working really hard on something that we're all expected to do. So we thought, you're right. Why don't we break you up into groups? So we're going to have six different groups going, and each group is going to create a slideshow presentation that every EC through 12th grade teacher will be exposed to, and it'll be the same slideshow. So instead of having to create six slideshows, I'm only creating one. So we will begin that work on September 5th, and then when they come back, they need to work on their portion of that presentation, and then be prepared to share it out to our whole first team for feedback, so that in October, they can start to implement that and show their teachers those slideshows in their building. What? Okay. Oh, sorry, I clicked. I shouldn't have clicked. Can you take me out of this? So that's just an example. I don't think you want me to go through the whole year, but it's very similar. That's our structure for the year. Okay. Oh, I think, so, professional learning for teachers. I'm almost done. Hang in there with me. How am I doing? So I'm excited about this, and I actually, Scott and I went around yesterday, and we presented this to every teacher in the district through grade-level teams, and we have gotten some really good feedback. The teachers are telling us that they're excited about this plan, which gives me even more momentum to make sure that we do this right and well. It is aligned to all three of our district priorities. Obviously, we're creating a shared understanding for our district vision. Obviously, we're going to be developing curriculum resources and assessments that are tied to our key content areas. And of course, we're going to be supporting our instructional strategies and implementing rigor, relevance, and the six Cs in everything that we do with our teachers this year. Before I talk about the learning strands, though, we're also excited about an NIU cohort that we're going to be starting. I just met with them today, and we have 30 participants signed up, registered, ready to go. It's fully supported by District 205, which we're proud of. 15 of those participants are special education teachers, and classes start on September 4th. It's a two-year program. They'll be finished in, I want to say, 2021, and they will be fully licensed and trained reading specialists, so that our students with special needs are being exposed to a teacher who has the resources and strategies in order to give them what they need. And then it's going to be housed here at the district office, right in this very room, which is really great and convenient for our teachers. So the learning strands, the why. So based off of teacher's feedback, we heard from them, we have heard from them year after year, that they really want embedded professional learning over time, and not just have one-and-done type professional learning. We all are guilty of going to something for a day, having really great intentions of coming back and implementing it, and then we get busy doing other things, and we don't. So what we decided to do was we created something called the learning strands, and we want teachers to have choice. So there are seven strands. They will pick a strand in collaboration with their evaluator, and those are the seven strands. Real quickly, workshop model will entail both math workshop, reading workshop, how they're the same and how they're different, and they'll kind of ebb and flow. They'll pull them together. Here are the structures, here are how they're the same and different. Then some math people will go this way, reading people will go this way, and then we'll ebb back in together. Content area literacy. We have a couple of great presenters coming from the Teachers College that I'm very excited about to work with that group. Co-teaching, Arianna Leonard and Anna Brahmas have done a lot of great work to plan for that one, to sort of do a reboot of what are the structures of co-teaching? How do we support co-teaching in the classroom? What should the classroom teacher be doing? What should the co-teacher be doing? How are we going to do that work? And I think that'll be a very powerful strand as well. Inquiry and problem-based learning. That's obviously tied to our science and social studies. Behavioral health. And then I'm going to be running the teacher leadership strand, and that will be by application only, and it's for teacher leaders who want to continue to lead as teachers, whether that be a reading specialist, a coach, a PLC leader, team leader, department chair. But then it's also for those leaders who want to go the administrative route as well. And then Scott's going to be running the innovation cohort, and that'll be by application only as well. Our field and Sandberg teachers will continue their work, and then we'll allow some other teams, some additional teams, to start some innovative work and have the space and the place for that. And we've created a Google site. You had access to this, I believe, through all your documents. There's a Google site for teachers to go to to help pick their strand, but then it also is going to house all of their artifacts. So if they're supposed to read an article, or if they have homework, it'll all be housed right there for them, so it's kind of like one-stop shopping. And we've also created a professional learning strands FAQ. We sat in learning and teaching and really tried to anticipate what are some questions that we think teachers, or even some of our leaders, might have regarding the professional learning strands, and we created that question-answer document. And then we told teachers that if you still have a question that you need an answer to, your principal is obviously your go-to person, but you can always reach out to us as well. We can continue to add to the FAQ document and get the answers to your questions. And then this week, Scott and I are working on sending a Google survey out to all the teachers, so that they can pick their strand and apply for strand, excuse me, strand six or seven, if they want to apply for one of those two strands. And as I said before, it's going to be a collaborative conversation between the teacher and evaluator. Obviously, we want teachers to have choice, but if there's a need that the evaluator feels that they have, we want that conversation to take place as well. And then when will the learning take place? It'll be during all district-driven PL time. So we're not going to, you know, walk this back and say, oh, standards-based reporting, we really need to talk about that. No, we have dedicated every district-driven day and hour to this work, because we believe so strongly in it. So October 5th, that institute day will be their first five-hour day. Then they'll have a late start. So on October 11th, they'll choose a critical friend, and that critical friend will be someone that they can talk to, learn alongside, and hold each other accountable for their learning throughout the entire year. So on November 20th, they'll report out to their critical friend the work they've done between August 11th and November 20th, so that work and that learning never stops. Then in January 13th, they'll have another five-hour day, and then they'll have the February, March, and April 22nd late starts, which will equal 14 hours of professional learning for our teachers in one area throughout the year. So we're pretty excited about it. And these are my, this is my full team that is going to help support this work this year, and we're excited about it. And we're ready for a great year of learning. Do you have any questions for me?
Thanks, Nikki. Margaret, do you have some?
Thank you. That was very comprehensive. And much appreciated. Two questions. I'm going to ask them both. First question is, I'm wondering, and this is maybe to Mary Ann, if I can get a little bit more information about the, I think it was EDS, the data warehouse tool? Just high level, but, you know, the thoughts behind it, and, you know, what the impact, potential impact for change is. And then, this is to, I heard a lot about what the teacher said about the And then this is to, I heard a lot about what the teacher said about the innovation workshop, but I'm wondering since Jim.
He didn't actually see our presentation. He, he came with us and he did some other work, but he wasn't a part of our, our presentation.
Okay.
They sent me home.
Oh, well, okay. Okay, so then it goes back to one question. If I could just get a little information about the data warehouse.
Sure. And I, I think I've actually presented on this earlier. I don't remember when, but a few board meetings ago. The main purpose of the data warehouse is really to bring together information from lots of the other systems that we have in the district. So for example, pulling in assessment data from many of the external assessment systems that we use, as well as bringing in information from our core student information system and so on. For this current school year, we kind of have two, maybe three, goals for this system. So one is we'll roll it out as that tool to make data more accessible to folks, especially, I think it will be useful for our student services teams. And then secondly, we're going to begin to use it to track interventions so that we have a better, more consistent manner to track that information.
Chris?
Yeah, just on that same topic, I, the slide there said, I think that there was 85 folks registered for that data. Is that, who, who are those employees? Is that teachers?
Yes.
Okay. And so the right denominator for that is total teachers in the district?
Yeah, the, the trainings that we did this summer were open to all of our certified staff. So we actually had a mix of teachers, counselors, psychologists, administrators and so on. And it was, it was intended just to be optional over the summer. And then as we sort of move towards implementation, I'm actually going back out to each and every school to meet with staff. And so some folks sort of have that head start.
Okay. Cause just the, the, I guess the number seemed low to me, like in terms of engagement level?
Sure. Because it's just that first, that first opportunity for them to, to, to look at it. And then we're going to have some systematic training for all of our administrators and teachers throughout the year.
Okay, got it. So it's just a ramp-up issue?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And I assume the goal would be to get the data in as many teachers' hands as we can, basically. Right? Okay. Okay. And then on, what, what is the overall participation level by teachers in these learning priorities?
Overall.
Do they all, do they all participate in these 14 hours? Is it voluntary?
Yes, every single teacher in the district will pick one of those seven strands, including our related service.
Turn your microphone.
Sorry. Including our, I thought I was a loud enough talker. Including our related service staff, that is, that's feedback that we've gotten is that they don't feel like they, that our professional learning is geared toward them. So that's why the behavioral health strand might be one that they want to choose. Co-teaching might be one that they want to choose. So we're hoping there's something for everyone. Obviously, you know, right now, we've got a lot of momentum for it. We've got teachers excited about it. There's going to be learning opportunities along the way and we're going to have some missteps. We'll learn from those this year and we'll be gathering teacher feedback along the way so that we can start to plan for next year, really quite soon.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, just listening to the presentation, it sounds good. It sounds like the right things to do, but I'm wondering how, how do we know that it's working?
By surveying the staff. And are we seeing the implementation of rigor and relevance of the six Cs in the, in the classroom? Are we seeing the implementation of the workshop model as expected for sixth, eighth? Are we seeing an increase in, in our co-teaching pairs and the level of satisfaction that the students report that they feel? And what are the students saying about that experience? We're still going to continue to survey students. We're still going to continue to survey staff throughout the year on all of, the, the same way that we have been. The homework survey, the co-teaching surveys for students and teachers. And then all the, the staff will have an opportunity to tell us, how are these learning strands working for them? What suggestions for improvement that do they have? And what do they want to make sure that we continue to do next year? And in addition to that, I'd also like to seek their input about additional learning strands as we move forward.
So Chris, let me, I, I'd like to jump in just a minute if I could. So I, I would say that an important point there is, I think what you're hitting on anyway is why we are emphasizing the concept of supervision of instruction. And we're trying to make that kind of a pervasive part of everybody's daily work so that it's, it's, it's not just the idea of, of a couple teacher evaluations every year. It's really more about supervising the classrooms on a daily basis, supervising the PLC work, developing the ability to give appropriate feedback and to have targeted feedback about the things that we think are most important in terms of leveraging the student learning. So that's the work that we're doing with trying to be very, very focused on helping coach our principals on how to make sure that these things are actually evident on a regular basis. When they're not, how do we deal with that? And then the, the continuum of the whole HR continuum of, of mentoring and supervision and summative evaluation and all of that is, is going to be built into every meeting.
Yeah, and it just, it seems, and, and that makes sense and I understand it. It just seems like there should also be a look-through to the outcome, our academic outcomes. So if we have a big push in learning and teaching on reading and our reading scores do, don't move, then maybe we should reevaluate what we're doing now. That, that's all just, you know, so that it's not just based on surveys, but also outcomes.
Exactly. I, I agree with you, Chris. And I think that that's what we're trying to get better at is, is to focus on outcomes. And I think that as the data warehouse evolves and as our learning targets for the six Cs and we have more data and more information and, and a better system to manage the data, I, I think that it will be in the hands of our users and we will be taking a look at those outcomes. And I think that what we're, we're starting to see is that each year that we do F and P testing, we, we see that, that each corresponding group of students is becoming more and more proficient. The problem is, is that some of them have only had it for two years and, and some of those younger kids haven't even taken, started taking the state test yet in third grade. So, so we are going to monitor and begin to, to have better longitudinal data and better timely data. That, that's kind of where Mary Ann was talking about, the, the interventions. And so I, I, I think you're, you're going to see us getting better at that. It's, it's something that we know we need to do.
Sorry, I think I misunderstood your question. So we will, the F and P data is a perfect example of something that we will be looking at, at a EC5 meeting. Bring your data, let's have a conversation about how did our third grade, third graders do last year compared to how our fourth graders are doing this year? What are some trends that we're seeing? What are we noticing? And what are we going to do differently for those kiddos that need something different? Absolutely.
Okay. And then, sorry, I just had one last one.
Sure.
So you had mentioned something about exposure to non-grade level material? And it just caught my attention because I was wondering why there would be any of that?
So we talk about scaffolding instruction for students. And I think while teachers' intentions are really good, I think oftentimes when they notice that students are struggling, let's say it's a, let's pick on third grade. Let's say it's a third grade students and their student and they're struggling with whatever that content is in math. It's really easy to say, oh, they can't multiply, so I'm going to go back and teach them how to add or subtract. And that's a, that, they do need to know how to add or subtract, but unfortunately, what I'm worried might be happening and that, this is what some of our instructional walkthroughs are going to take a look at, some conversations that we're going to have with teachers are. Even if they, if they're struggling with what you're doing, if you're not exposing them to that and teaching them how to do that, they will never learn how to do that. So we just want to make sure we're not over scaffolding for students was, was my, was why I said that.
So Chris, the, what, what, what we're, what we need to get people to understand is that you don't, you don't close gaps by, by teaching kids at, at a lower level than the grade level standard. What you have to do is have the classroom instruction at the grade level standard and then backfill the skills deficits through the interventions. Otherwise, they just stay the one or two years behind and they just incrementally get better, but they never catch up. And so that's, that's, I think, kind of what Nikki's talking about is making sure the classroom instruction is at standard and then we get good at the interventions, but, but we don't, we don't dumb down the classroom instruction and then the kids never catch up.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen?
Thanks Nikki. I actually am going to bring Bev into the conversation because I'm going to talk about linkage again. And specifically communication. So we're, we're doing a lot of work. People are coming to the table and doing the work. And there are, as you said, there's always hiccups or something that's going on. We're asking for their input, but can we communicate several things? One, outcomes to programs, okay? And be clear about that, not only externally, but internally. And secondly, the communication of when we get feedback from whomever it is, in this case, teachers, what are, what are their issues? And do we, do we go back to them and say, here was your issue, here's the resolution that? Just, it's, it's, I think it's important for us to do, bring in the communication piece of it and make sure that we are reinforcing that instead of assuming that it's being done and people will draw that conclusion. Cause I think that will help some of the, you know, some of the things that you hear with regard to culture. Do you see what I'm saying? Okay. So just, you know, making sure that we can continue to do those linkages and I'll call them feedback loops, right?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. The last piece that I would ask, instead of surveying people to death, are there other ways of getting feedback and what struggles people are having, whatever you want to call it, versus always serving people so they're, you see what I'm saying? There's other ways of getting, how is it going? You know, what can we do to help sort of?
I think that's easier from my perspective, in my position, to do through conversations with principals. When we do that often. My plan and my goal this year is to get into PLCs and be in team meetings, but obviously there's 13 schools. I will not feasibly, nor will Scott, any of us be able to get into every single one of them. But I, you know, one of the, the strengths that I think I bring to the table is that I've been here for nine years and I have relationships with a lot of people in a lot of different ways. I have a lot of EC5 relationships through my principal experience and I've built, I think some very strong relationships with our ELA teams at six through eight and 912. And so I can certainly capitalize on, on those relationships to get feedback, but you make a really great point. We don't want to survey teachers to death. However, when we ask the same questions over time, we're able, it gives us good information also. So I don't, I'm not discounting what you're saying. It's certainly something that we need to think about, yes. So thank you for that feedback. Yes, sir.
Although in, in Karen's line of thinking as well, I, I think we need to ask our students more. Somehow we leave them out of the feedback loop. So I, I'm encouraged by when you say that you're surveying students. I, I think we need, the more feedback we can get from our students, the better.
I agree. Yes.
In that same line, is it surveying the students, whether it's surveying the teachers or looking at data, is that something that we can do more often throughout the year so that if there is a problem or a teacher needs support, we can make sure that they're getting that right away rather than?
Yeah, I'm hoping that through PLCs and through conversations with their principals, any of those immediate type issues are, are being resolved. I think the bigger picture things that we're surveying are how are students feeling about their behavioral health? And if, if they're exhibiting anxiety, what are the reasons for that? Is it because it's too much homework? They're taking on too many activities? And so I think that the survey that Mary Ann created really helps, helped us start to dig into that and, and have a better understanding of where our students are coming from. And those are the types of things we want to continue to serve our, survey our students around. Regarding our teachers, we, they fill out a survey at the end of the year, every year, whether that's good timing or not, we're all tired at the end of the year, but they give us some pretty critical and pretty honest feedback. So I would like to continue to survey, and it's also part of the, the agreement with the union, so we have to do that. But specifically regarding the learning strands, I want to survey that because I need to understand and know by January, if this is working and then we want to continue with this, what is that going to look like for next year? Because I know I'm going to have Dr. Moyer in my ear asking me very soon, what are we going to be doing for this for next year? So I don't want to make unilateral decisions about that. I want it to be based off what our teachers are telling us. So yes, to your question.
And just along, and you're talking about having principals in the classroom more often, which I think is great.
Yes. All of us, actually, we're all committed to that. Sorry to interrupt you.
So that if there is support that teachers need, that they would be able to, we would know that along the way.
Absolutely. Yes.
Waiting for the end of the year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I got a question now.
Sure.
All right. So first of all, thanks for all your work in professional development. I mean, where I feel like we have come as a district in the professional learning that we're offering teachers is really amazing, really good. So, you know, we've, we, a lot of the district admin, district office administrators go to conferences and some are presenting and some are attending, which, you know, just you see things that other people are doing and you get out of, you know, your own bubble, so to speak. So in this professional development, how often or do teachers have an opportunity to go outside the district? To just observe, you know, we'll use workshop, for example. So if you are doing the workshop strand and I'm a teacher and I, you know, sign up for that and maybe I can go see it in the district, do I also get an opportunity? Or are there other opportunities for me to go outside the district to see what other school districts are doing?
Yes, to both of those questions. First of all, thank you for your, your comment. I appreciate that. We are working hard and I appreciate you recognizing that. Last year, something I did, because we were learning about workshop model for six, eight, we allowed every teacher, sixth through eighth grade, to go to Westchester and see workshop in action in another building through a partnership that I had developed with another principal. So that's something we did last year. This year, I'm very excited to be bringing in the Teachers' College. If you're not aware, the Columbia, in Columbia College, the Teachers' College specifically, Lucy Cawkins is a writer and a professor for them. Some of the most amazing professional learning for teachers comes from that college. And I have secured two professional developers, staff developers, teacher leaders to come. And each of the three middle schools will have those two individuals in their building three times throughout the year, this year, so that they can debrief about a lesson, see them teach a lesson and then ask questions after to build their professional capacity to teach workshop model. So do they get out of the district as much as we would like for them to be able to? Probably not. But I do feel like we offer, offer those opportunities as often as we can. I can talk about Dave Beatty's work last year. He brought, he didn't go out of the district, but he did bring in someone. And he did walkthroughs in every classroom for the workshop model and provided opportunities for teachers to ask questions, to meet with the, with the person, to enhance the way that they were implementing workshop in the classroom. Because that goes back to what we were talking about a little bit ago. We want to make sure if we're saying math workshop is a priority, what is taking place during those small group activities? We want to make sure those activities are not just pulling things off of teacher, pay teacher, but they're using Eureka materials and they're, they're exposing students to grade-level material.
Well, and I don't, I mean, there's also the balance too of, we don't want teachers out, you know, you don't want to be gone too much.
Right, absolutely.
So there's that balance. And I know as a teacher, it's a lot of work when you're gone, sometimes more work, you know, so. But I just wondered if those opportunities were available at times. And then the second question I have is, how are, so if I'm, if I'm a high school teacher, how often am I exposed to or interacting with both the level ahead? So like, for instance, am I doing a college visit? If I'm teaching science at the high school, do I know what the colleges are actually expecting of the students that I'm teaching? And am I visiting a middle school to understand what the kids are actually doing in middle school and see that maybe they're, you know, they have more capability than I might think? Or are those opportunities built in as well?
Yes. So it's actually funny that you mentioned that. That was something that I was working on as Director of Literacy with the sixth through 12th grade department chairs. So there's one from each middle school and then Kevin Poduska is at the high school. And we created a structure this year so that our eighth grade students could visit high school teachers, teaching, and so that high school teachers could visit the eighth grade teachers. So that we could start to have, are we there yet and are we doing that across the district? And are we doing that across the district? No. But we're starting to seek opportunities and times and pockets where we can begin to have that vertical articulation. The October Institute Day this last year was reserved, part of the day was for that vertical articulation, but that won't be the case this year because we're taking it for the learning strands. So we have to give something to get something. But yes, to answer your question, we know that that vertical articulation is important. We did do that with K5, with the vertical articulation of the standards. So we kind of took a step back this year and did an all-new vertical articulation of the standards and looked at, if we're saying reading literature standard one is important, K through five, what do they need to know and be able to do in 5th grade? And what do they need to know and be able to do in kindergarten? And how are we building that throughout the grades?
Thanks. I just think if you don't know where you're trying to go.
Absolutely.
And you don't have a vision of what that needs to look like.
Right.
It's hard to help get them there. So, thanks.
Thanks.
So Kara, I'd like to just add a couple things, too, because I think it adds a little bit of depth, maybe, to the question you asked. When we were looking at the K2 tech pilots, we had teachers go out to schools. Berwyn, for example, is a district that's pretty far ahead with tech. People visited that school and some others. The incubator program, the project Lead the Way, the student services, people with the behavioral health, when we were looking at the middle school reorganization and interventions. So when we have something of significance like that, we usually do try to make efforts to do that. So I thought I would just kind of reinforce Nikki's answer a little bit there.
All right. I think that's it. So thank you very much. All right. Tentative budget for fiscal year '20, Welton.
Well, Chris is walking up there. I just wanted to comment on the picture that you saw, that Nikki showed in the last part of the presentation. I wanted to point out that you see the two special ed directors in that picture. The directors are now attending the learning and teaching meetings, and we're being very conscious about trying to ensure that student services and learning and teaching are working together effectively on everything that we do. So I thought I would just kind of point that out. You ready to go up there?
Yes. So tonight, the board will vote to accept and post the 2019-20 tentative budget. Notice will be published in the newspaper on Friday. It will be put on, the budget will be put on display for 30 days. The public hearing on the final budget will be September 24th at 7:00 p.m. When we do the tentative budget, we don't have all of our staff hired. So in the tentative budget, we have a lot of estimates related to staff salaries and staff benefits. So there, between the tentative budget and the final budget, we improve it for accuracy and precision, because then we get the actual staff in the positions and when we do the final budget next month. So there are some more estimates, which we tweak between now and the final budget. But what I always look at, the first number that we probably, everyone here automatically looks at in the budget is the, this one right here, the operating revenues compared to the operating expenditures is the annual operating income or deficit. And in this case, it's a very slight deficit of $331,000. That is a 0.25 percent. It is essentially a break-even budget. So, you know, this budget benefited from the timing of property tax collections. Back in December of 2017, we had a new federal tax. There was concern about getting a deduction for property taxes. So many taxpayers paid those taxes in December of '17, so that made our collections in the spring of '18 more or higher. And then, so in the fall of '18, last fiscal year, we had smaller property taxes. So last year, if you looked at our annual fiscal year, the property taxes went down. So then, this year, when you compare this year to last year, it has a larger increases. So property taxes in this budget and the operating funds make up 83.48 percent of the revenues. So all, total operating revenues increased 6.2 percent. Property taxes in this budget are increased 7.7 percent. But that is a, it's just a perception or, you know, just a timing of property tax collections. I sent you a memo about state funding recently. The State Board of Ed, like, a few weeks ago, determined the evidence-based funding. This year, we are at 101 percent of adequacy, which puts us in the fourth tier. The fourth tier, as far as the tier funding goes, tier one, which is school districts with the least amount of local resources, they get 50 percent of the tier funding. Tier two gets 49 percent of the tier funding. Tier three gets 0.9 percent of the tier funding. And tier four, which we are, gets 0.1 percent of the tier funding, which in this budget is $9,500 increase in state funding. So we go from $6,495,000 to $6,505,000. So it's flat state funding. On the expenditure side, this budget, the salaries and benefits are 75.38 percent of the budget. So it is, as usual, mostly salaries and benefits on the expenditure side. Overall, operating expenditures increased by 8.2 percent, primarily due to staffing. And we're going to go, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. But on the expenditure side, I wanted to just briefly talk about the categories of expenditures. Salaries, salaries are compensation, primary salary, extra-duty work, curriculum work, stipends, any compensation. Benefits is health insurance, I R F, Social Security, Medicare, HSA contributions. Purchase services are things like busing, nursing contract, legal services, architect services, occupational therapists and physical therapists through SACID, professional development like speakers and workshops and conferences. Those are in the purchase services category. Supplies are things like office supplies and paper. Things that are less than $500 per item fall in the supplies for goods. Capital outlay are larger items, greater than $2,000 per item. Dues, fees, tuition, that's mostly membership dues, but really the biggest, I mean, mostly outplace tuition, but also membership dues. Outplace tuition is the biggest item in that category. Non-capital equipment, these are goods purchased that are greater than $500 per item, but they don't reach the capital outlay threshold. In this budget, we are planning to purchase the classroom furniture for all 5th grade elementary, or all 5th grade classrooms that are not included in the referendum. So they don't include Field and Lincoln or the new section of Edison, but all of the other 5th grade classrooms, this budget has the furniture, new furniture. Also, we have a transfer out of the operations and maintenance fund to the capital projects fund. We had done a transfer, and we had said that $2 million wasn't going to cover all of this summer's projects. It's going to need another $650,000 to cover this summer's projects. And then next summer's projects, this budget has $3.2 million. And we will be showing that, or coming up more details on what next summer's projects will be in November, December, is when Todd will be showing the plan for next summer's capital maintenance projects. This budget also has a transfer from the education fund to the debt service fund for technology leases, and from the operation maintenance fund to the debt service for debt certificates. The operating fund balance is estimated to end the year at 45.96 percent of expenditures, which is adequate. So in the non-operating funds are the debt service fund and the capital projects fund. In the capital project fund, we have, we're bond proceeds that will be closing on next week, $60 million. And that's going to be accounted for in Fund 61 and separated from Fund 60, where we're doing our, Fund 60, we do our normal summer capital maintenance projects. Fund 61 is where the $60 million will go into, and that will be used for referendum project expenditures. So the grand total of all funds, including the non-operating funds, we have revenues of $215,745.21 and expenditures of $161,494,569. Overall annual net surplus, $54,245,952. And Dave, I wanted to just touch on staffing, since staffing is such a large part of the budget. I wanted to just point out, so we're adding, between EL and special ed, we are adding approximately 10 teachers in those areas. Then we have the small reductions in the general education of 3.64. And then the high school, we have a department chair reduction, that was the fine arts department chair, which now became a central office coordinator in position control, is the way that is listed. And then it also shows here, we have the 2.34 deans. So it's two-thirds, right, two-thirds, two-thirds at Bryan and Sandberg, and then 1.0 at Churchville. And then we added a .5 instructional coach at Madison, since they didn't get an assistant principal. But then, so there, we did add assistant principals, three school administrators. In additional to this, 8.77, three additional school administrators, 1.6 special ed and EL assistants, and the one central office coordinator. So we are increasing staffing overall, 14.37. And that, that's it for the tentative budget.
Thanks. Questions, comments? Jim?
Chris, I realize you, a question probably takes a little analysis, and you're not going to answer off the top of your head. But in the background materials you provided, I was concerned that over the last 10 years, our certified staff, staffing has gone up by a headcount of about 90. And over those same 10 years, our student population has grown, I don't know, what is it, about 800, maybe? About 10 percent over the last 10 years? I mean, that's one teacher for every nine kids. Can you, and I'm not asking for an answer right now, but can we get some kind of an accounting of, like you did for this year, where all those additional personnel have been assigned to over the last decade?
Dave, can you move up one? Just higher, yeah. Yeah, you can't read it, but I can.
Perfect. Thank you.
The, in 1112, we had 14 EL teachers, which is currently at 30. So that is, that's gone from 14 to 30. So, and then the special ed, we were at 113. Oh, no, did I do that wrong? I did that wrong. That's the change. We went from 14 to 44 EL. So we increased to 30. Special ed was at 113 and is now at 148.5. So that's up 35.5. And then in the regular general education, we had 488 teachers, which went up to 510. So it's up 22 teachers.
I think that of those 22 teachers, I think about 15 of them or 16 of them are instructional coaches.
That's true.
So the way to interpret that would be that essentially, ELL and special ed have grown well above the growth rate in the population, and general ed has grown well below.
That is correct.
Chris?
Yeah, just, would you remind us the administrative costs of our district relative to peers?
Yes, we, I think in all of unit districts in Illinois, we are the seventh lowest. Can't remember the exact numbers, but we are one of the lowest for all unit districts in administrative costs.
Yeah, as I recall, there's over 600 school districts in Illinois, or unit districts in Illinois, and there's only six or seven that on a per-pupil basis spend less on administration than we do.
Okay. And then my second question was, with regards to revenues just being a little bit inflated for this budget cycle, does that, do you have an idea of by how much? And I guess my concern is just, you know, our expense growth in this budget is like in the sixes, right, or six or seven. We're obviously not going to be able to inflate at that level in perpetuity. And we can follow up on it as we go through the next month. I'm just trying to get a sense for, like, a normal year, our property tax revenue would have gone up by what, like, three or four?
Three.
Three? Okay, got it.
Yeah. This budget definitely has an increase in the capital maintenance, and we're definitely making a concerted effort for, trying to get more proactive as far as facility maintenance. And that's a concerted effort. Along, combine that with the purchasing of furniture, this is, you know, a significant increase over furniture purchasing than any previous year. Those are two big things. And then the staffing increases of over 14 staff is just unsustainable, and not at all will we be able to stay at, you know, our normal property tax increase if we keep adding that many staff in a year.
Yeah, understood. And I'm supportive of the spending on capital, like we talked about earlier. I think that's a good, we have some catch-up to do there. And I just wanted to mention, as we talked about earlier, I think as we go through the next month or so, it'd be helpful to see a breakdown in spending trend by building, to the extent possible. And then also a distribution of the final class sizes at the various tiers, so elementary, middle, and high school as well, just so we can look at outliers and, you know, if we properly address those when we vote on the final budget.
There's a new report that's due to the State Board of Ed this week, which is going to be, include in the report card, cost per school site, cost per pupil. And so that is going to be an interesting new thing across the state, to see the cost per pupil at each school site. Ours, I mean, ours is already, I'm drafted, it's not complete yet, but, you know, the Madison School per pupil is the highest, for sure. But that, that has, in our 13 locations, has the most special ed. locations, has the most special ed, the population per school site as a percentage, and that is what, you know, drives that, and the students are there only half day. So the, we normally talk about three-hundred Madison kids, the way the state counts them, it's more like one-fifty because they're only there a half day. And, but I am going to do, in order, you know, to help to digest, but we also have another thing that influences that each school site is some of our buildings have, like, regional special ed where students come from different buildings to go to regional, and some of the smaller self-contained classrooms, you know, that increases your number of staff per pupil. So we're going to take that certified number of, there's seven oh, seven-hundred-and-three certified, and have that, how many certified at each building on a per pupil ratio to see what that looks like. And it probably will come out similar in the cost per pupil. But that's something we're working on, and so we're going to work on that with Helen, who does position control, and come up with certified per building per pupil. But that report, all of my colleagues, everyone across the state is scrambling to, because this is the first time ever that we've had to calculate per, cost per pupil at each school site.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the work.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Off the top you had, do you know the approximate expense of all new fifth-grade furniture?
Trying to remember that. I think it was about two million.
Okay.
I believe.
It's about fifteen thousand a classroom, correct?
Right, yes. Two million, or no, am I?
I guess it's a little high, that might be a little high.
I think I have an extra zero there. Let me, let me get back to you on that. I think I have an extra zero. Let me get back to you on the exact number.
Margaret?
So this might be related, but talking about net change, under debt service, the other objects, it's a significant increase this year or this upcoming year compared to prior years? And I wonder if you could explain a little bit about what that, what drove that change?
I could. We just did this bond issue, and it included what they called the capitalized interest. So over three million dollars in capitalized interest, which will be paid out of the debt service, but it's part of the bond issue. So we actually got more than sixty million. We received premium and accrued interest to pay for the capitalized interest out of debt service and the bond issuance cost. So those are all included in the debt service fund, where in the capital projects fund, we just, we have the sixty million in revenues, which is actually going into Fund sixty-one. And then that transfer, Dave, can you go back to the other summary sheet? The three-million-eight-fifty transfer is the, so in the capital projects fund, three million eight-fifty transfers, that's the six-hundred-and-fifty thousand that I talked about for this summer, and three-point-two million for next summer's project. That's that three-million-eight-fifty, and then the sixty million there. In this number, the three-million-seven-sixty-two, that's also bond proceeds that are going to be used to pay the capitalized interest out of the debt service fund.
Karen?
Chris, can you help us understand, earlier when you were going through the summary of budget, you went through the recent information that you emailed the board so that we got a heads up about what's happening with evidence-based model?
Evidence-based funding model, yes.
Yeah. Can you help us understand the implications of that?
Well, it's flat for our district, flat revenues, where districts that have less property taxes, and generally, it's the EAV per pupil that's really put us at tier four. So we are going to just, I mean, I generally have been budgeting state funding flat for a long time, but now it's just certainty of just flat state revenues. There, I mean, it's nine-thousand-five-hundred-dollar increase in state funding out of six-million-five.
Chris, we had a big TIF release this year, and I'm just wondering if that might be what put us into tier four, if we might slip back to tier three next year, might help a little bit?
Well, it definitely increased our EAV, and so I do think that that pushed us up a little bit, was that we had a pretty significant, the last few years, we've had pretty significant increases in EAV, and I think that did put us, we've been right on the bubble between tier three and tier four. We were at ninety-nine percent of adequacy. The first year, we were at one-on-one, then we went to ninety-nine, now we're back to one-on-one. But that went, you know, the year we were at tier three, we received an additional one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, where the two years we were in tier four, we got ten-thousand.
And that's excluding transportation? And categoricals?
Yes, that excludes categoricals.
Just back to the furniture, I pulled up the memo from
Oh, good, thank you.
Whatever, wherever it was, April, I think.
Yes.
So the total for all of the classrooms
That was the two-million number.
Was one-point-seven-nine-four million. So you're, you are, you have an extra zero.
But for the fifth grade, I think it was
It doesn't say specifically by, because it's all done by school, but each total is about two-hundred to three-hundred, so probably two-hundred is
I think it was two-hundred and
Thousand, not two million.
All right.
Karen?
The only other item that I wanted to see if we could have a conversation, or what you're doing within the district to help manage keeping staffing flat, because we have been increasing significantly versus the student population, and I thought we were projecting that that would not continue, and it continues. So what are we doing to manage that? Because I know we're adding a lot of programs, which was said that that would stop the staffing increases, et cetera.
Well, I think we did, we did have the special education study this year, and I felt like some of the special ed increases this year were responding to some of the needs that were pointed out in the special education study. And so I was, at least in my mind, I don't know, that was kind of a one-time, like, hit, I don't know, but I mean, obviously, we're always adding staff, you know, based on the needs of the students in the district. So, and I don't know if that can be really predicted or forecasted with accuracy when it comes to those needs. But I will open, anybody else want to comment on the staffing?
Well, I mean, I think that you, you saw that the general at sta, I mean, over the last couple of years, our trend for general at staffing has been relatively flat and maybe even some slight reductions. It's the special education and EL staffing that we have some difficulty being able to predict and manage, because a lot of that ends up being based on the needs of the students. So I do hold tight to the targets. I do hold tight with the principles to the best extent that I can with not authorizing people that come to us expensive, but when you have the need for a bilingual reading specialist, or, you know, different things like that, those people have more certifications and have more experience typically, so some of those things, we don't have as much control over. And there's, is becoming a little bit of a teacher shortage, so when you talk about adding special education teachers, they're typically not as easy to find, and so it's, you do get people from other districts that see this as a place where they would like to come, and so maybe the shortage hasn't hit us as directly yet, but it is getting more difficult to find teachers. So there's a lot of factors we're dealing with. I think we've done pretty good managing our special ed staffing in, as it relates to trying to be responsive to the feedback that we got with the special ed program analysis. So I feel like some of those things were things that we felt were important, but I do agree that we can't continue to add staff like this. It's been bothering me, you know, every year that we go through this, because I know that that is the primary driver of our expenses. So I agree with you. You know, I am, at this next round of staffing, have some different things that I want to take another look at to see if there are a couple of things that we could do to be a little bit more conservative, but we're really pretty conservative. It's the special learning populations that are driving up a lot of the, lot of the staffing increases. And then, you know, the other thing that we are expecting to get some relief from is that as we delevel and don't have to have as many conflicts in the master schedule and don't have to have as many things that make it difficult to balance class sizes, we think that over time, that that'll get a little bit better. But we offer a lot of electives at the high school, and people want that. And, you know, so, I mean, those are difficult decisions, and we just try to do our best. I mean, I, I don't know, Chris might not think this, but I try to be pretty, pretty much of a stickler on staffing, and it just, we have had some enrollment increases. I do think the instructional coaches were one of the best investments that the district ever made. That's part of some of the recent increases, but the majority of it is the special learning populations and some of those issues that we have to wrestle with.
So then that drives the focus again on outcomes. You know, I think that that's what we have to show with the taxpayers, is that, you know, the increase in the numbers, my take was just more numbers, we're not getting the increase as students as we are how we're increasing staffing, so it was just those numbers. But the focus has to be, you know, on, you know, how are we communicating and linking what we're doing with outcomes for students? Because, you know, we're doing a lot with capital, we're doing a lot, we, you know, this budget, just like every year, is levying to the max. You know, at some point, it's not sustainable, but you want the outcome, so I think it's just, it drives that conversation. It's not just about money, it's about what we're doing. And so I just think that all of these pieces work together, and we need to be, you know, getting to that, what are the outcomes for our students? Because it's not just throwing headcount at it. We know that doesn't drive the outcome, but it does drive the expense.
Chris?
Yeah, just one last thing. The, I think the help, the breakout of staffing by EL, special ed, and general is very helpful, and I don't know if we have that by building.
We do.
I assume we do. So just as we go through the process, it'd be helpful to see that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's agenda, consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull an item off of the consent agenda? All right, then do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda. Item A, personnel report. B, acceptance and posting of fiscal year twenty, tentative budget.
I'll second.
Go ahead and call the vote. Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Strothman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, motion passes. Next is superintendent's communication facilities update.
So the next facilities, or the next finance committee meeting, which will have some more information on facilities, is August twentieth. The architects are going to be planning to give you a report on the final designs at the September tenth meeting, so that we can have community meetings at Edison and Bryan on September thirtieth and October first, and be prepared to get the bids out this fall, late fall, anticipating to do that before the holidays. And then I did put on here the all-day kindergarten informational sessions, because that is something that came out of the master planning process, even though that's, that isn't, you know, not strictly facilities. So you see those two dates on there, and then also, and I'll put this in my newsletter, but for people that are interested, we will, I'm lining up some dates with the architects. We can sit down either individually or in twos and work through any questions you might have about those designs in advance of the meeting on the tenth, so that you feel comfortable and prepared going into that meeting. So that will be available for anybody that's interested, and I think that's, I think that's, I've hit everything that is on here.
All right, tweet of the, oh, wait, hold on.
Just when we sit down with the architects to go through the plans, it'd be helpful to have some concept of cost alongside of it, because at least for me, I won't know, I'm not going to have an opinion on the plans unless I have at least an estimate of how much it costs. So just something to pass along to them.
Yeah, they continue to refine that every week in terms of their projections on, as this evolves, so I would expect that they're anticipating that, but I'll make it clear that they need to be prepared to have that. We'll talk to construction manager.
All right, Bev, tweet of the week.
Thank you to the board. Tweet of the week, it is our segment to highlight all of the great things happening in our schools across social media. We group them usually all with the hashtag, hashtag ignite D two oh five, and this week's honor goes to Shaleen DeLacary, who is the new principal at Emerson. You can find her on Twitter, or her handle is at Shaleen DeLac. And she is actually welcoming some kindergarten faces to the family, to the Eagles family, and she says, "So fun meeting some new @EmersonD205Eagles at our PTA Kinder Play Date. Can't wait for Wednesday," which of course is tomorrow, the first day of school, and can you believe it, that is the class of 2032. Yeah, feeling old. Just one plug before I close off the mic, that tomorrow, along with the start of school, we're doing our second annual hashtag D two oh five first day social media campaign. So as your little ones or olders go head off to school, grab a picture of them, all of that preparation on their way to school on Facebook, Instagram, or Twitter, and drop the hashtag D two oh five first day behind all of that, or at the front of that, and we will get to retweet, repost, take a look at all of those wonderful happenings across the district, and do some of that wonderful stuff you talk about, Karen, communication, of the great things that's happening, that are happening in our schools all the time. And it will turn into a contest that we get to vote on here in central office for the best photo. So hashtag D two oh five first day coming up tomorrow, first day of school, class of 2032 is coming in.
All right, thank you. All right, any board communications? All right, then, we have three upcoming meetings scheduled, Tuesday, August twentieth, 2019, finance committee meeting at five-thirty here in District Tuesday, August 20th, 2019, finance committee meeting at 5:30 here in District 205 Center. Tuesday, August 27th, 2019, Board of Education meeting, 7 o'clock here in District 205 Center. And Tuesday, September 10th, 2019, Board of Education meeting, 7 o'clock here in District 205 Center. If that's it, meeting is adjourned.